Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to our regular city council meeting for the city of La Sure, February twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, we'll call the meeting in order. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, you were all given a copy of tonight's agenda via email and also a hard copy. We can review over it. This time, we will entertain any motions to approve tonight's agenda. So, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Second, my council member, Tui, thank you. Any other discussion comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have one item if I can add it. On item four C, the consent agenda, just want to address it now. Well, so I just handed in a memorandum of understanding just before the meetings that there was one item added to that. I like it in yellow on page two, the connecting kids agreement. I can speak to that later on, but I just wanted to make note of that. It's not an addition or a modification to the agenda, just a change to an agenda item.
Okay, well, that said, on item four C, City Administrator, a couple of few more details on that. As he reviews everything, we've had the motion made by Councilmember Sullivan, second by Councilmember Tui. Any discussion comments come in service. If not, all is in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to the consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are considered routine, have been made available for the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items being acted on motion, there will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member, citizen, so requests, and each of them, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Mr. Roby, do you want to review the sources?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. On tonight's consent agenda, we have five separate items. Item A, approved city council minutes from the regular city council meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item B, approved dispersments through February twenty-seven today. Included in those dispersments are three items over twenty-five thousand dollars. The first being the magnetic construction. Application number seventeen for well number eight in the wellhouse for seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Second being Minnesota Department of Revenue, city sales tax for January twenty twenty-three, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. And finally, EPR consulting engineers for work on the Main Street substation improvements, only twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and seventy-five cents. Item C, approved connecting kids partnership and agreement. This is the item that I had a slightly modified version before the agenda, specifically with the agreed upon financial responsibilities. This agreement allows the city of La Sure to provide additional funding to the scholarship program should the city council opt to budget for those dollars. Funding for this would come through the connecting kids program, but yet the city were to receive its own contributions or decide to budget for the scholarship program for pools and activity fees, the city could do that and contribute those funds directly. It's not a requirement of the program. Item D, approving payment application number seventeen for well aid in the wellhouse. And item E, approved airport hangar project work order number one, which was just discussed at the EEA meeting earlier this afternoon. The EEA voted to lend the, lend the city money to cover the ten percent match as this amount was not budgeted in twenty twenty-three. So the EEA will be developing terms of the city to fund the ten percent local match for the airport hangar project and city engineer, city airport engineer, S H, will with approval, decide and get to work on the development of that new hangar.
Well, that said, well, that said, is any council member, any questions for our city administrator? If not, I'm letting a motion pass the consent agenda. So we'll make your councilmember Swandler, second, thank you, my councilmember Huntington. Any other discussion comments or concerns? If not, all was in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to public comment before I read about public comment. Do we have anybody tonight, Mr. Swan?
We have one person signed up. Anyone else?
Okay, public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes. For persons wishing to comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided, identify themselves by writing their name and address. Tonight, we would like to welcome Mr. Kenny Film. Would you like to step up to the podium? We'd like to hear.
I need to hear this a bit to see what I'm going to say, but I put some information sheets on the table in front of you, you guys, and stuff that you can have and take and read, stuff for your convenience and stuff. And I guess I'll do the best I can here. The group I'm representing, we'd like to thank the city council and the city members for this opportunity to speak and present our request. First off, I can introduce myself. I'm Kenny Fowley, sixty-nine years of La Sure, forty years in business, twenty-plus years in the La Sure Fire Department, eighteen-plus years in the La Sure Baseball Association. Our request is to change the name of the baseball field from Bruce Frank to Joe Driscoll Field. Not to take anything away from Bruce Frank, who was best known for his great baseball coaching. But times are changing. Main Street is back open again. And there's no more Hubert H. Humphrey Method Dome. It's time for a change. So Joe still has family in La Sure and all over and then his wife Nancy, daughter, brothers, sisters, nieces and nephews, many great nieces and nephews in La Sure, and many friends and fans. We feel at this time it'd be a privilege and honor to one of the La Sure great baseball players. Joe grew up in La Sure. And then he ended up leaving us this last year. After thirty-four, thirty-five seasons in the Minnesota Baseball Association, twenty-four state appearances, six-time state champion, nineteen seventy-nine MVP of the whole tournament. Then in twenty thirteen, it happened. Joe was inducted into the Minnesota Baseball Hall of Fame. You go to any park in Minnesota and talk to somebody. And some guy, you sit there, you know, some guy named Joe Driscoll? And they'll put a big smile on your face. And if you're fortunate, you probably get a story. This, we feel, would be a great tribute to Joe, the city of La Sure, and the state of Minnesota. Thank you for your thank you for your time. And in parting, we'd also, I got a little note here at the bottom here, we'd also like permission to sit there and put a honorary plaque on the press box up at the baseball field in honor of Mike Keenan, voice of the Minnesota River Valley. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation tonight, Mr. Fowley. I think everybody here knew Joe Driscoll well. We all admired him and enjoyed watching him play ball also. The council will not make a decision on this tonight. It's not an agenda item.
Yeah, we understand that.
We want to be sensitive, not only to the Driscoll family, to the Frank family, and to the community also. So this is something we will weigh in on and give a lot of consideration.
We understand that.
So, thank you.
And you guys are our, we can sit there and take any of those and.
I will grab one on my way out. Thank you.
Good reading. Thank you.
With that said, we will walk through the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have a few items tonight. A meeting today with Representative Melissa Rehm Chamber. It was a great meeting. We talked about some other plans for the summer. I expect they'll be coming forward to city council sometime in the next month to discuss their plans for summer in the valley. To recall their events last year, they had three Thursday evening events on the New One Hundred Block South Main. They're proposing some changes to that, enhancements to that. So I just think they'll be coming to council to share what they'd like to do now there. They're hosting a retail and business expo April first up at the middle school, high school commons. And then this Thursday, I'll be joining the Chamber out at Cambria. They're starting a series of manufacturer luncheons. They're kicking it off at Cambria to bring the industrial and commercial businesses together. So I appreciate the time the Chamber let me today to sit down and talk about the the great work that they're doing. We had a good EDA meeting tonight. Lots to talk about with the EDA. I appreciate their time and extended meeting tonight. We met last week with Bold and Mag and J L G Architects to discuss a recreation facilities master planning. We got to take a look at some preliminary concepts, just kind of bringing together the feedback from stakeholder meetings, the community survey, conversation with the community center task force and input from staff to really start to put together on a map what, what does the future of the community center look like or what potentially could it look like? Very, very preliminary, very conceptual at this point. Then the next step is really to fine tune some of those concepts, establish operational costs for those. And so the consulting team will be working with staff over the next few weeks to look at what operational costs in the community center look like right now, what might it look like in a new envisioning of the community center? And what would that mean financially going forward? So that's really saying we're moving forward. Fire Commission meets this Wednesday. We've postponed it a couple of times now, but we will be meeting this Wednesday, five thirty P M. Fire Commission meets three times a year and Mr. Mr. Sullivan sits representing city council in the city of La Sure. Each of the townships that are served by the La Sure Fire Department send township commissioner or township board member to sit on the La Sure Fire Commission. So that means three times a year. And this is the annual meeting where we discuss fire service assessments. Fire service assessments are a determination the city makes for what the city of La Sure and what the townships will pay for the coming year for the use of the fire department. I have some handouts here that I will please make sure you grab one of these for me before you go. La Sure County Emergency Management is hosting an emergency management training session for elected and senior officials. Tuesday, March seventh, six P M to eight thirty P M at La Sure County Justice Center. And this is training specifically for elected and senior local officials. This is, I strongly encourage everyone to attend if they can. I just got this invite from Tanny Stewie, the La Sure County Emergency Manager, last week. One of the things as part of our overall city emergency preparedness plan and revamping that plan with Justin Nielsen, our emergency manager, is to ensure that we train city council members appropriately. And Leamis of the cities recommends that city council members be trained in incident command, for example. This isn't going to cover all the IC house trainings, but it's going to kind of explain what city council members, the mayor's role is in incident command. So if we were to ever establish our emergency operations center here at the city for natural disaster, large-scale power outage or something else, what would city health's role be in that, in that incident command system? So that's going to be a a really great opportunity for council members if you're able to attend. And finally, there are some questions about the stormwater utility that I've come up recently. I just want to address that really somewhat briefly here. It's not on the agenda tonight. But the stormwater utility itself was established back in twenty seventeen, eighteen by the city council. The stormwater system, which covers most of the city limits itself, is used to manage cities' stormwater, ensure that it's not pooling, that it's flowing where it needs to flow. And maintenance of that system itself, that previously come from a couple of different sources, that had come from the general tax levy. Public Works would chip in some time and effort into maintaining that. Water wastewater department would would spend some time and money and resources into maintaining that system. And what a lot of cities have done in the last decade or so is establish a utility fund itself, much like our water utility, our wastewater utility, our electric utility, to to set aside funds for maintaining the critical stormwater system. And as part of that, the city council established tiers or charges for stormwater based upon acreage. Different cities do some, their charges a little bit differently. There's some statutory guidelines around that. But it is certainly our newest utility, but it does set aside money so that we can truly maintain our system and not just rely upon public works that happens to have a little extra money in the budget. They can replace some drains and things like that. And ultimately, then when we do larger projects like street projects, the stormwater utility can fund some of its own work. So when we did the South Main Street thirty-sixth project and had to do redo the stormwater system, the stormwater utility itself can, can pay for some of that. So we're still spending the money, which is being retarded and where we get those dollars from instead of relying on the tax levy. So it is relatively new. The staff have had conversations over the last couple of years, really ensuring that that the building for that functions properly. Certainly, staff will continue to have conversations if council would like to look at that more broadly. We certainly can. How we charge for it, and the city, Seapeter, does an acreage, there's a, strengthened by acreage, but also by zoning. So if you're high, high-density residential, less than one acre, it's this much. If you're low, low-density residential, higher acreage, your rate is this much per month. So you can you can set your charges certainly different ways. The city of La Sure is fairly straightforward. It's based upon acreage alone. So that's a little bit of background.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is this a charge that's currently going on? Or is this going to be added to?
This is currently a charge that's already on utility bills.
So you're just taking, putting it in a big white pot as opposed to pulling it from everybody?
Correct.
Got to bring it down.
No, that's a, that's a great question. Yeah, no, again, in the past, if we needed to, you know, do a street project and replace some of the stormwater system, the water fund might pay for it, or we might increase the tax levy to raise some money to pay for it. This way, we're setting aside funds that we can say, all right, we're going to have a fund balance of a hundred thousand dollars in stormwater. So next time we need to replace a flat stormwater main, a main, North Main Street, like we did last summer, the summer before, outside UFC two years ago, stormwater utility has some money set aside that they can go and replace that. So I just wanted to provide some background on that because it is it's relatively, again, relatively new. It is currently on utility bills for property limits. City limits, and it is charged to every property within the city limits, which is consistent with, generally, most municipalities handling.
Joe, I think just to be clear though, I think since I was at the moment, we have had to make changes to it for the simple fact that I want to call them weird situations, but different types of property have come up where it's like, does it really make sense charging on that amount? So we've gone back and relooked at it.
Correct. So there have been a couple of instances. One last year in particular, it was kind of a funky property deal where it wasn't, it was annexed in the city late, and it's owned by the EDA land or where the area used to be. There are some exceptions for properties in the flood plain, things like that. So much like our utilities, it is looked at and the council desires we can more definitely look at it. And that's all I have for you.
Anybody else have any questions for our city administrator? If not, we can move on to the regular agenda if we may. There's one item on the regular agenda, seven A, it's the R twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine, thousand twenty-three raise planning grant. I will cast that our city administrator, Mr. Roby, interviews our city engineer, Mr. Cory Bean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, Mr. Mayor, item seven A tonight, the only item on the regular agenda tonight, and it's for the U S Department of Transportation, twenty twenty-three raise planning grants application. City, in conjunction with our city engineer, have been working at and invited city engineer, Bean, here tonight to help walk us through what this process means, some of the history behind this target area, and what this planning grant would mean. I received some questions from council members before the meeting. Great questions, and we can certainly address those here. I will turn it over to Mr. Beanthing, and please do be ready to jump in with questions.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. So my goal tonight is to share with you a little bit more what the raise grant really is intended for, define it, and then share with you why the staff and myself are pretty excited at how it's fitting here with this northeast sewer area. So grant overview, starting there, it's rebuilding American infrastructure and sustainability and equity. That's where the raise comes from. This grant has been titled, some others, it's been around for decades. Tiger is one that's been referenced previously. So it's a kind of a rebranding grant. This is the latest brand that is being dubbed this raise. It's a, it's a federal program through the U S Department of Transportation. And in normal years, it's, you know, just short of a, of a, you know, billion dollars or so, and seven fifty to nine hundred million is the normal program. Kind of stemming again through those, those, you know, multiple decades of the program existence. It does have now a boost from the latest infrastructure and Jobs Act, the one point two trillion that you're hearing that Biden allocated, the federal government allocated. And so that's nearly double what they have done to allocate through this grant fund. So this is the second year of the program, and so, you know, it seems to have some, some competition and, and some, you know, interest based on this additional funding. Grants are able to be applied for by planning or for planning or construction. So in this case, for us, in specifics to our grant tip for La Sure, we're looking at a planning only, a study only grant. And one of the questions was, you know, does this planning only a study grant help, you know, position and potentially put the city in a more competitive situation for one of those construction grants? And I think we think that it does, you know, a construction grant is going to really lean heavily on having a plan, having some sort of concept. And we're acknowledging that in the case of this La Sure project, we lack that. And so we're going to, we're, you know, the strategy is to maybe tier into this phase into this, the potential for external funding. Maximum grant award, this would be for a construction grant, you know, could be the twenty-five million noted there. So these are, these are bigger projects. This is a national, you know, competition or national pursuit for potential big projects. One of the things that we feel is appealing, fifty percent of funds are for rural, fifty percent then are reserved for urban. We are falling under the rural category. So there is, there is some, you know, some division and some, we maintain competitiveness. So we're not just in the high urban, high metropolitan areas within the nation. So we feel like that's a, that's a value for our pursuit as well. The, the grant is focusing on, on transportation, surface transportation. So they, they write out solar and E V. And so there's some things that the grant is a demon, it's ineligible. So it's surface transportation, road improvements, infrastructure of that nature with significant local and regional impact. And so we think that's pretty powerful for us, for us as well. And I'm going to share why this area really we feel fits that. And then the award is for projects that are improving safety, economic strength, equity, accessibility, climate, environment, kind of all those, those fancy terms, you know, that, that would support the investment of, of, you know, federal, you know, statutory dollars. The area focused for us is the northeast sewer one sixty-nine corridor, and I'm going to share, and then the pack, you noticed the map there with our project area. But we felt like this was a really good fit based on past investments. I might touch on a little, a few of those. It's been pretty extensive, honestly, how much we've talked and looked at this area. And then notably, you know, even as much as the, the meeting before tonight, EDA meeting, just the increasing interest in this corridor. And we feel like an opportunity for the city to kind of lead in some visioning there might be a really great value. So maybe talk, I'll talk about the details first and then just a few things from the figures. So to be clear, the ask for this project, the total project estimated cost is three hundred dollars. That's what we're deeming the effort to study this corridor is going to take. So the three hundred thousand, breaking that down then within the packing and the ass tonight, then we are seeking a two hundred and forty thousand federal grant. That's going to be the application asked. And then that is then supplemented or supported with a local match of twenty percent. And then the map there is a sixty thousand dollar local match. It is, you know, been deemed, and we have been in conversation with the grant coordinators and, you know, MinDOT folks, that a, that a local match is really important. It speaks commitment. It speaks, you know, stability if awarded, that the, the, the city is committed to moving forward. And it's truly going to be a worthwhile award and investment of those dollars. And so twenty percent is our target in the recommendation. It also does pair well with, for, for those that are familiar, when you get federal grants through like tax or safe routes, a lot of the government programs want A to one. So we're kind of aligning again with what, you know, MinDOT would, would normally be seeing. So we, we would, for competitive, that's where we, we feel we are best positioned for. And the goal for this is, is to reinforce again the planning, the study, and we're not building anything directly through this, this effort, this project. But it's, it's really trying to strive for comprehensive vision in this corridor. We'd like to understand the needs and opportunities. I think those are best. Establish goals for the plan. It's not, you know, not directly praying exactly what all the goals. We think we have some, some definite needs, and I'll touch on a few of those. We'd like to develop a couple of different alternatives. I think we would be looking at placing an infrastructure on the map, looking at right away needs, really getting down to what would be necessary next steps to solve it, potentially depending on the two alternatives. I think, you know, the ultimate dream would to be able to achieve consent and maybe consensus on one of those alternatives. But I don't know if that's where, you know, we have to get to, but that would be great. And then ultimately from this is to develop that implementation plan so that this can be built in phases, increments. I think that would be the idea is to have kind of the greater, greater vision, consensus vision, but be able to increment it out and maybe have more affordable improvements completed in segments. So that would be kind of, that's the, that's the goal of this, of this three hundred thousand, that effort. So then the north corridor study, we're, we're really looking at the north interchange, capture Mayo Park, that interchange there, and then going up north to Henderson Station Road. That's, that's our stretch of study. The interchange in Mayo Park is significant because The interchange in Mayo Park is significant because that is a destination that we've had some discussion on about maybe a trailhead. Of where that trail would continue north end to the greater reaches of the city. We've got a potential Mayo Park grant that we're, we're talking about. We've had a forest prairie and, and, and high zone redundant water line that's coming from that area. So it really feels like. That's kind of the, the reach of the development to date. Also significantly, that's where Dopey Lane near starts and near that. And so. A huge priority of this too is, is, is what are we gonna do with Dopey Lane? And that's from a roadway standpoint, but we also think that has a lot of tie with this potential trail extension and really wanting to make sure that. Back to that accessibility thing, we're providing both road and, and, and non-road users an opportunity to, to travel. So then, you know, continuing north, we've got the, obviously the reach of Dopey Lane and Cambria. But then getting out through the EDA property and then ultimately to Henderson Station Road. As part of our transportation plan, we've identified a need for another interchange. It's not. Exactly solved where that would fit, but we know it'd be between the north interchange and nineteen. And Henderson Station Road does have a pretty good feel there. It's got Henderson Station Road for connectivity. And also geograph, you know, the geography there has, the terrain has a pretty good fit where. It would feel, you know, you know, right to bring Henderson Station Road underneath and one sixty-nine over. So, you know, that's where we, we feel like that'd be a good place to kind of land this out. And then capturing some of the existing studies. So we have the twenty forty plan to kind of guide us in, in what. The vision for the city was and obviously that was created, you know, twenty sixteen, so about six, seven years ago now. But within the last two years, we supplemented that with the future growth area. As well as a transportation plan that had a lot of emphasis about how fronted roads are extended north and what that infrastructure could look like to serve that future growth. We did a wetland delineation on EDA property in twenty nineteen, kind of. You know, spaced my memory on that, but we studied that whole property. We found some record of what's been dubbed the Oxtard Trail. That was a trail extension starting from Mayo Park to get up. To Dopey Lane. So we have some of that support. And then the interchange kind of evaluation, I talked about Henderson Station Road. So we. Really feel like, you know, the body of that work shows that we just didn't dream this up, you know, as part of the grant, just in the last two months, but we've been really. We've been evaluating this from a lot of different angles and there's a lot of interest up here potentially. And so we felt like. What a great opportunity potentially to bring that all together. And we really feel the, the city could be, the, the, was the right lead here. I'm gonna talk about the stakeholders, but I think the city could be, you know, kind of the calm here and, and the. You know, the organizer of all, of all these visions and these opportunities. So and then a couple of other things, you know, looking at it, there's, there's a lot of traffic on one sixty-nine. You didn't, you know, we, not a surprise to us, but greater than fifty thousand cars a day. It's a really heavy freight. Heavy, you know, heavy commercial freight travel corridor. So I think it has a lot of significance for MINDOT. It's top five in the, in the most traveled roadways in the state. And then looking a little greater into some of the, the, the traffic data as far as the accidents and injuries. And it's, it's pretty, pretty substantial, honestly, stemming from. Dopey Lane and, and the median crossover there at the rest stop, continuing up to Henderson Station Road. You know, not, not a ton of injuries. There's, there's, there's been some, you know, some injuries and even a fatal crash, not. Definitely not spanning, you know, the vast majority, but a lot of off, off roads, you know, poor weather conditions. And so there would be things that we'd definitely be looking at from a safety standpoint. I think we checked that box, that this is, it exceeds what you would, what you establish as a baseline for, for accident on this corridor. So I think that has a lot of. Merit as well. I think it's gonna help bolster our application. And this, this graphic here, this one pager, we kind of dubbed it, it was to help just call attention to, it's something shared with the letters of support. So I think it was a nice summary graphic, but that's the, the stemming of, of. Of what the purpose of that was. So stakeholders, this is kind of directly tying to our letters of support, which we, we, we got a number of them to Joe's efforts and primarily we were able to hit on, I think, all of the stakeholders. That, that we wanted to kind of capture and identify had interest. Lee Sewer County is a big one, obviously. Roadway connections as well as, you know, we're getting to the, to what is official city limits, the, the, the reach here. MINDOT is gonna be huge with the one sixty-nine corridor. We have some local employers. Obviously Cambria and, and others out there forward, you know, what is the vision and what does that area look like there? EDA property, pretty, pretty significant and easy to tell where that comes into play. Chamber of Commerce, the general public of Lee Sewer. And then, and then, you know, potentially where this trail connection goes at Henderson Station Road, realizing some improvement there, potential long-term. Identify the city of Henderson potentially. So next steps, where are we at? So tonight, adoption, really the goal tonight is to reaffirm that local match and the city support to, to apply for this. The application's middle is, is tomorrow, February twenty-eighth. And so that would be our goal then is to submit our application. I, we are there except for the resolution. So it's, it's been a little bit tight. They advertise this kind of late end of New Year and. And something we were kind of, you know, floating around and rumoring and then we really said, you know what? Let's, let's try to go for this. I think we have the necessary stuff to support a good application. That's really what, what helps support it. Our expectation is this summer, we would hear, I think, June, July, August, somewhere in there, hard to pin down exactly when the federal government would make a decision, but that would be our target. Summer twenty-three, we would know the results for application. And then a pretty lengthy time to actually get anything formal. So six to twelve months with emphasis on twelve months should be expected. Where it would take to get the actual grant agreement that we come out with council and actually execute. And then with any grant, it's, it's very clear that nowhere can start prior to that. So we'd be just in a waiting game then if successful. And our anticipation is project would start in twenty-four. I think that would be, you know, best case scenario. Again, it's not a, you know, rigid, you know, month of twenty-four when we'd have to, but. Estimated twenty-four, things go successfully, you know, if it takes the full twelve months, we're gonna be later in twenty-four for sure. And then a two to three year project to complete, I think, is what we're thinking, you know, by the time we get some community involvement and. Get all these people, you know, to, you know, to meet together, several meetings likely. Get some layouts and the council would be a part of that process definitely. So we're, this isn't, this isn't a two-month project by any means. That kind of supports the magnitude of the ask. And then ultimately, there's a, there's a sunset on the funds of twenty thirty-two. So we're feeling pretty confident that we can, we can, we can accomplish our goal. And, and, and not be at jeopardy there of, of losing the funds, certainly from a timing perspective. So then as I, I shared and I definitely be more than happy to answer any questions or participate further discussion, but the ask tonight is, is. In, in the language in the packet is supportive, the resolution all nine, supporting the pursuit, the application on the avenue of Lee Sewer. For the raise twenty twenty-three grant program for the upper one sixty-nine corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Bean thing. Got your homework if you're key after ready to send that in tomorrow.
Yeah, we've had a, a lot of support. It's been a good team. Zach and Joe and. I've got a couple that are, are part of our funding team and both of me that have been really instrumental, have a lot of experience in this. And so. It's not an unfamiliar program for our firm. And so it's been, it's been a really good team approach for sure.
And we expect to hear something this summer, whether we receive this grant money, which is a rather large amount of money, that it would be. Substantial for this community. My question is maybe more from the city minister, should we get this grant? Would that matching money, would it come out of this year's budget or next year's?
No, so the, the matching funds would, would come whenever the project starts. So, you know, twenty twenty-four likely. At the earliest end. So what we would look for is, you know, if, if we find out about this in June, July, and so this year, that's around the time the city's budget cycle. What we would do even before that is really start to have some conversations with. The, the EDA, with the county around, you know. The city would be committed to, to these match funds, but I, I would like to have some conversations with the county, whether it's around the abatement funds, whether it's. You know, with, with the EDA partnership to, to generate those, those matching funds. I think there's an opportunity there. The city's not the only winner in, in a plan like this and it is. Substantial undertaking to, to complete a study like this and. So that's. That is your question.
Anybody else have any questions for, for city minister or city engineer, Mr. Williams?
I had sent Joe, just so everybody knows, a bunch of questions. And it sounds like they got, they got forwarded. A couple of things, the sixty thousand, I don't get the math. When you send your application in tomorrow, it's gonna say, we want two hundred and forty thousand bucks, right? Well, twenty percent of that is forty-eight thousand, not sixty. So you could make that seventy thousand and say, okay, we're gonna make it X percent, or you could have made it fifty thousand and it's gonna be X percent.
I can, I can help answer that. So then, the, the way, council member two, the best way I can describe is, so in, in our application tomorrow, we have a project scope work plan. And that, that project scope is to support a project total of three hundred thousand. That's, that's what we feel the project is gonna take to, that's the amount of effort it's gonna take to achieve our.
Three hundred thousand number on the application?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can move on.
Okay, yep, yep.
Okay. And you already said that it's not a requirement, the study is not a requirement for future grants. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Then. Alex says, like Joe just said, that. We're gonna try to mitigate the sixty thousand dollar commit, correct? County, EDA. And the highways, one sixty-nine and bait. Does not the city already fund those two things, at least in part? The EDA and the abatement?
So the, the city doesn't fund the EDA, the EDA. But it's its own taxes separately and has its own budget. The abatement, the city does contribute a portion of that to, to the abatement fund, yes. The county contributes the other portion of the abatement.
Joe, the correction, the abatement is tax money, correct? That was.
Yeah, it's a levy. Correct. So it's, well, it's, it's a levy amount, but it's, it's at its core, it's a property tax. Setting aside property taxes for three specific parcels. In that happen to reside in this. But we are, we are set the levy some dollars to, to catch up from prior years when the city did not set aside those.
I guess my point is, and I go and I put ten dollars in this fund, that's my ten dollars. Now I'm gonna take eight dollars out for this. It, it's just moving the egg around. You know, the P and the A. We're already paying into it. We're gonna take it out to pay this.
I think, I think the difference, like maybe to clear your question up though, is. Tax revenue generated from the three properties, so. That fund, the city spent money over the years or put it into their general budget versus putting it into the fund. And we shouldn't, it shouldn't have been being put aside all, all along. So now to catch that fund up.
I understand. I get that. I get that. But. I guess my point is, we're already paying into it, however you wanna look at. Whether it's tax revenue, whether, whatever it is, it's a pot of money. That the city is contributing to, and now we're gonna turn around and try to take some back out to mitigate this sixty thousand.
And the argument that I would make for that is that this, this abatement fund is kind of created for that. So that the abatement fund was, was created for the purpose of enhancing development specifically in this corridor. And, you know, there, there's a. A tight alignment, almost exact to what this northless or highway one sixty-nine corridor is and the defining boundaries of the abatement fund. Because those, those abatement dollars were set aside initially by the county and the city to be used for, in my, my argument, for projects such as this.
Okay, fair enough. And then as far as the contribution, that is not required with the grant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That should about do it. Thank you.
Williams, you got any question?
The study is that done by you or do you have to go on with our?
It's a good question. I can answer that for you. So federal, federal funds of this nature will require a competitive solicitation on behalf of the city. So then. It can be, it can be a price base, it can be qualification based. That's oftentimes what we see. It's a, a qualification. Qualification based solicitation, but the city will have to, will have to competitively seek who is gonna help support the planning.
In the overhead there, there is a reference to. The previous studies. One of which. Is the US one sixty-nine Henderson Station Road interchange study. I sent Joe, I asked him, what is that? And all I basically got back was a picture, but it had bold and bank on it with no text. The reason I wanted that. And I'll ask you guys, is there any redundancy between that two thousand twenty-one study? And this?
I answered the best of me, but I think there's two questions built into that. So first off, the study, I think study is a little misleading, but. The US interchange Henderson Station Road was certainly evaluated. There is a period of time in the last two years, say, where. EDA is, is, has been, I guess, you know, kind of exhaustive in what is the opportunity of the land in the upper one sixty-nine corridor. And there is this discussion of a potential industrial park development. And one of the challenges that, that development kind of was leading into is, is where does that land out then? What, what is that? You know, development served on the south side of that is pretty straightforward. You know, with, with, with Upper Tower Road there, industrial park road, whatever you wanna reference to that. But on the north end, it was, wasn't exactly clear, right? There's Henderson Station Road, a lot of steep grade there, gravel road. And so as part of that study, we were evaluating what's the feasibility of an interchange there. Where does that? EDA development land out? What's the access to one sixty-nine? That's the other challenge with this quarter, you know, one sixty-nine access is, is really difficult to acquire now. And, and even more so, you know, we know we have some existing accesses that are challenging, that Dopey Lane, rest station access, that's a challenging access. And so. I think there's, there's a lot of value in studying one sixty-nine. I mean, that's a huge partner in this, but that was, yeah, that was, council member two, that was the intent of that is. Henderson Station, what's the viability of interchange? We did concept evaluate that as part of that kind of EDA effort. And then through that, then we got an idea of cost. And I think that's the greatest value in applying an exercise you ask, is it a requirement to get additional grant opportunities? The, the literal answer to that is no, they don't preclude you from applying for grants, planning or construction. Based on previous grant awards or, or successes, but. What a planning style grant does do for you is it helps you identify what is your preferred alternative. And then through that preferred alternative, you have a targeted cost. And so then you know how then to go out and, and solicit implementation or, or external funding. You know what your target is. And I think that's the greatest value here is, is really, you know, how are we gonna solve Dopey Lane? And what is the front end joint extension? What's the cost of that? What's the concept of that? I think. It's, it's really those, those kind of time intents and efforts to look through those alternatives. That's what a, a grant like this does, helps support. And, and I, I'll profit. So I think growth in this area of Lee Sewer is gonna be externally sourced. It's gonna have to be supported externally because. These are, these are big dollar projects. A, a can, a concept for an interchange at Henderson Station Road, you're over twenty million dollars just right there. And so these are big projects. And so. You know, I think that the, you know, a solidification of a plan and some idea of what's that ultimate ceiling and cost would be really helpful to know. You know, what's, what's the viability and what's opportunities we have as a city to see some of these things come to fruition. So. That interchange study is, is, is exactly that. It's concept, you know, alternatives for Henderson Station Road.
So there is no redundancy between that study and this?
No, I would say it's, 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 it's support of. I think when, when you go at a planning application like this, a, a raised grant of, of, you know, national competition. The, the, the background support, why this is valuable locally, regionally, you know, what is, what is the economic impacts? I think showing that you've looked into it, you've got some idea of what you're, you're hopeful to accomplish is, is really valuable and bolstering that application. I think I like to say it as. You know, the, the goal raised there isn't that you sit around the table on January first and be like, I think we can dream up a project for that. It's having kind of the pieces in place, enough interest and, and enough support to say, this is why we are competitive and then, and then. Position yourself and going forward and putting your hat in the ring, so to speak. So I think it, I think it's supplementing and reinforcing the competitiveness of. What we're trying to accomplish or supplementing. We haven't solved it. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of interest, a lot of ideas, but none of it has really been gathered and, and certainly not all moving in the same direction. I think that's a fair statement.
And really what we've had is over the last twenty years, whether it's via these previous studies or concept plans or, you know, we've had everything from the Oxcart Trail, which was back in twenty eleven, which was gonna, you know, potentially bring a trail down the the railroad corridor or bring it up to Henderson Station Road and be in the nice center. So we, that work that the the city at the time applied for some grant money for, um, we've got Dobby Lane, which is a perennial problem that was closed today because of ice. I mean, today was like, you know, you got it, and that Dobby Lane happened to be closed the day that we're having this conversation. But Dobby Lane isn't a major problem. You know, there's no pedestrian access from that residential development to the rest of town, which makes it very problematic from a residential development standpoint. Um, EDA had an extended meeting again today to discuss what development on its land means. So we've done all these different pieces, um, over time to try and address different things. The we referenced and this came up earlier, the EDA meeting, you know, utility access and the redundant water line. Um, you know, the 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 potential for a frontage road along the EDA line that would connect Henderson Station Road to Industrial Park Street. And, you know, do we eventually look at connecting Dobby Lane to Industrial Park Street to create, you know, a real, you know, uh, uh, somewhat a loop with safer access from from, you know, our residential development that Dobby Lane would drive um, on the one sixty nine, other than, you know, the road that happens to be closed today and is closed for some regularity because of bad weather conditions. So it brings all these things together in this key corridor, where we also happen to have some money set aside in conjunction with county. We know MINDA has actively been looking at projects such as, you know, considering, you know, the 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 future location of the wayside rest. Um, we know at one point in time, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, MINDA was in conversations around doing some kind of, you know, whether it's overpass or interchange and around where Industrial Park Street is, but those kind of conversations fell for wayside. This is an opportunity for us to get some real, you know, federal dollars, um, to bring all of our partners to the table. And we've got a lot of support from, you know, from MINDA. And I think the letters of support speak to that, that from a health, safety standpoint and economic development standpoint. This brings all those conversations together and says, all right, Brian, for once and for all, can we develop a unified vision for what that Mayo Park data change Henderson Station Road looks like? And and to Corey's point, the city's never gonna have the money. It's gonna have to be partnerships, uh, whether it's federal grant money, it's MINDA, it's county. Um, because they are big, big dollars. But it's really the unified vision of what is the future of this development look like? EDA is having these really good, difficult conversations right now about it's largest asset, which is this hundred and forty eight acres. Uh, you know, the the future of EDA projects, you know, hinges upon what happens with that land. And, um, so, but meanwhile, the city's trying to keep Dobby Lane open. And meanwhile, you know, MINDA is trying to figure out what to do with the rest stop. So it's really bringing all these things together, um, in 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 one vision, uh, with all of our partners at the table.
So the rest stop is not part of this, because it's not only, is that correct?
It is.
Yeah, it's on the.
Moving it?
On, not not necessarily moving it, no, not necessarily, but it is considered part of it.
Okay, no, no, I understand that, but I.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the left there, Congressman Joe, if you really wanna know, it's about whole point, um, whole point six on the study, study components. So it 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 talks about the Midir Rest area and, you know, the the, you know, job creation opportunities of Cambria plans.
Right, you just have to close it, do they conclude?
Oh, no, yeah, there's no option to close the white side. So we're talking, I think, literally relocation, a moving of of and and and, you know, I think we all understand the value of the moving it would be to allow for expansion of Cambria. So, yeah, yep, nope, exactly. Where where does it go if it doesn't reside in its current location? And and that's not been decided.
Thank you, uh, city engineer, we appreciate your depth of conversation here, it's very healthy. Um, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion with the council to, uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty three, yes, two hundred and ninety, supporting pursuit, twenty twenty three, raise planning grant for the north, assuming highway one sixty nine. So, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Definitely, Councilmember Schlier. Do we have a discussion, comments, or concerns? If not, all those in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Thank you, uh, Mr. Beanfink. Moving on to, uh, reports, items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity to share what's happening in the community, what's happening with your commissions. As always, we will start with Councilmember Hight.
Thanks, sir. Uh, this Thursday, I have a airport commission meeting, four thirty here at Seattle. Uh, then also I'd like to send a great thanks to the city for their snow removal of the last snowstorm we had. And that's about it.
You, uh, Councilmember Schlier.
I have had multiple region nine meetings since last council meeting. I do need to sit down with Administrator Bobby and Director Carrot to go over some of the items. And hopefully we get to that this week. That resource, county officials meeting was canceled because of the blizzard conditions. It's gonna be held at the end of next month.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Uh, I'm in a very long evening. A closed session in Cambria, so this was the potential future, what that looks like. Other than that, it was great conversation, report continues for that all goes, everyone's stamina.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Swender.
I have nothing today.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Tui.
I have nothing.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Williams.
I don't really have any commission meeting notes to, uh, dress power. I do, did like to see, was sort of mentioned on the WCCO news, thanks to Gay Parker for putting her on that news.
Uh, the mayor has nothing to report tonight. Uh, I also wanna reiterate what Councilmember Huntington said about the snow removal, the most grand undertaking last week when we saved the survive. Uh, Mr. World, we've had your opportunity unless there was something else you need to share with us?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. With that, I want to take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So much.
Thank you, all those in chamber?
Aye.